The council will come to order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd all please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our men and women who are serving and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Maes. Clerk will call the roll. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon.
Yeah.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Seega.
Here.
Counselor Semenelli. Counselor Spatafora.
Yeah.
Counselor Winslow.
Here.
Counselor President Murphy.
Here.
For those in attendance, under the provisions of the open meeting law, please be advised that Urban Media Arts Uma Television will be recording this evening's meeting, so there will be video and audio recording. First order of business. I believe we have people signed in for public comment. While she's getting the public comment sheet, public comment is allowed under council rules. Each speaker is limited to the subject matter relevant to this evening's agenda and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have eight people.
Okay. Okay, let me put you on. Good. In case we have eight people signed up for public comment and then a number of emails that were sent into us.
We'll explain, let's get through these.
Absolutely right. So the first one is Keenan Bryn. I can't read the writing, is that right? Yeah. And when you come to the podium, if you would please state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Is this my application?
No, if he's here for the petition.
Oh, Keenan, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay. It's, Keenan, this is actually public comment on things that are on the document, not the public hearing that you are here for. So, thank you. Okay, so we have.
Stephanie Alberto.
Stephanie Alberto, if you please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, Stephanie Alberto, 409 Bryant Street. I want to say I'm opposed to the two papers about the money from the general fund for the Roosevelt Park turf project. I would like to see the field remediated, but I want to see CPC funding used for that because that's what the CPC would like. They wrote you a letter. The other thing is that yesterday Chairwoman, the Board of Health Chair Carrington, said that you guys have all the same documentation that the Board of Health has. You're making these decisions based on all that documentation. You know your liability. And there's so much between injury from heat stress or PFAS contamination or flooding in the neighborhood. There's a lot of ways for this project to go wrong. And the city is putting themselves in financial liability. It's not, the field itself is not insurable because it's in a flood plain. Also, at the very least, anybody who votes for this project is not going to be on the right side of history. Gen Z and Generation Alpha are not having the toxins. And people who put in toxins are going to be the villains in their narratives. And also, I'm a millennial. And I know millennial parents, we're all about the organic and the non-toxic and everything. And we spend more money to buy things like organic food or organic mattresses or whatever. There's one more point. I'll end my comments there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alberto. Len Morello, please. Could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Len Marullo, 134 Dexter Street, Malden. I have well over 40 years professional employment by another public school system close by. And I've done everything from lining fields for soccer teams in other towns. And I know a lot about the prevention of athletic injuries and also the care of athletic injuries. So my major concern is if artificial turf is put in, it causes a lot of stress in bodies, especially young bodies, okay? And especially young girls and women have problems in the knee, ankle joints and so forth. And when you cut and make moves and do all your techniques and skilled practices, the surface is unforgiving. Now, there's some talk about putting extra padding in. Now, that extra padding may not actually stay consistent over the years, just as the surface of an artificial field degrades. So there's so many issues having to do with health and the human body where this just doesn't fit. There's additional issues that are somewhat related in terms of the heat that's produced constantly when even it's not used as a sporting venue. Additionally, courty mairly and many other fields could be used as maybe backup to our grass fields that are going to be undergoing a lot of repair. So I am also in favor of those sports teams that have coaches and so forth. They should be responsible for lining fields and some of the cutting of the grass. You have to cut the grass when you line them and stuff. So just hire high school kids, college kids, whatever, to help out for a few. And I think things will be much better going the natural way.
Thank you, Mr. Morello.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Charlie Conifrey.
Good evening, council. Charlie Conifrey, 220 Middle Street, West Newbury. I am the Director of Athletics and Physical Education and Health, pre-K to 12, for the Malden Public Schools. And just wanted to be up here tonight and advocate for the proposed plan of turf, the artificial turf plan that we've been working on for numerous years now. I just wanted to bring one aspect into it that hasn't really been talked about. As an educational professional, from pre-K all the way through 12, the field such as this, a multi-use field, will increase physical activity and there's a direct link to increased mental well-being and social emotional health. And I just think it's imperative that our students and especially the kids from the Salemwood School, or 1,200 students or so, have access to a premier facility to increase time of play, recess, collaboration with peers, and so forth. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conifrey. Ryan Bodridge. Ryan, if you would come up and if you would state your name and address for the record. And I see you have a posse behind you, huh?
My name is Ryan Bodridge. I live at 24 Quincy Street. I'm a 14-year-old. And I am here to ask the Finance Committee to approve the additional funding for the turf fields at Roosevelt Park. As a baseball catcher, I am the closest player to the ground during the game. I have played from Maine all the way down to the Florida Panhandle, including Myrtle Beach, which is probably the hottest place I have ever played. I have never had an issue with turf being too hot. In Myrtle Beach, it was 105 degrees outside and I was diving, making plays with no issues. People talk about injuries on turf, but turf has even playing surfaces and grass does not. We play at Pine Banks and they do a great job there, but there are still holes in the outfield and the dirt is still hard, even after being dragged. We have had games canceled for rain and if we had a turf field, it wouldn't have happened. Cities and towns all around us have turf fields and we deserve to have access to the same type of facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. John Sayah.
My name is John Sayah from 37 Pierce Street, Ward 5. And I just want to speak out against files 139 and 140. And basically, the mayor has had considerable amount of funds from COVID relief for years and he's chosen to not spend that on the remediation of Roosevelt Park and the lead. It's been there longstanding. He's directed money to Dever Park, Trafton Park. I'm sure all you councilors know that some of that money has gone to benefit your wards and your constituents. I don't think that the council needs to give the mayor any more money, let alone 2.5 million, when it's almost doubling the cost of the project when the mayor's still sitting on about $14 million that's still available, like a loot pinata hanging until his campaign season ends. I don't think that's fair to the community. The city also has been informed, I believe, by Chris Webb from the Board of Health that they've decided to postpone their recommendations regarding the safety of artificial turf until July. That is after the council will be breaking for the summer. But I would recommend that the council follow the CPC's recommendations to take action now. And that would involve approving, just letting the mayor spend the money he has to remediate the lead in the soil so that the field can be usable again and resolve the issue of grass versus turf at a later date. Since the issue of mental health came up, again, it's been 20 years since I was taking classes to be an athletic training major. 20 years ago, the consensus was that artificial turf was too hot. It led to additional injuries. That additional heat led to increased predisposition for athletic injuries on the field, dehydration, vulnerable populations. I inform the council in its on file that Governor Healy has designated one of the recent weeks as Multiple Chemical Sensitivity Awareness Week. In addition to catering to the athletes, it's a public resource that is directly beneficial to the local community in Ward 5. The city is looking to make the city walkable. It should consider the local constituents. In addition to vulnerable populations that are vulnerable to the heat, the chemicals, they're not being screened before they use the field.
Mr. Sayah, you've passed your two-minute time frame.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Thompson.
Hi. Watching the pregame for the Celtics.
How's it going?
Fingers crossed.
You know the drill, Laura. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm ride or die for them. Yeah, my name is Laura Thompson. I live at 53 Placestead Road. I live adjacent to Roosevelt Park. And I've heard a lot of people talking about sports and the sports players and I appreciate all of it. But I have not heard one person like mention the neighbors that live in the park. These neighbors won't just come and go. These neighbors will be there 24/7. So I've never, in all the discussions that I've had and listened to, I've never really heard anybody discuss the factors that will affect these human beings. And the factors include being exposed 24/7 to chemicals. They include we're at risk because we don't know what's going to happen if you switch into turf. No one has put any kind of guarantees about what's going to happen with the flooding. We're at severe risk. Right now, the park acts as a flood basin and it absorbs all the excess water. What's going to happen when that's gone? Can somebody give me a guarantee? What's going to happen when the turf field is there? And climate change happens and there's more hot days and less cool nights. What's going to happen to my neighbors who cannot afford to pay the higher electricity bills? What is going to happen to my neighborhood? That's what I would like to know. That's what I wonder, what you guys think about. I'm all for sports. I've got the Celtics on right now. I love sports. I had my kids play sports. But there's a balance and equity that I teach my kids. Some things are important and some things are more important.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And the last speaker this evening is Masham Manong.
Thank you. My name is Masham Manong. I live at 296 Bryant Street in Malden. And I'm here to say that climate change and heat islands are killing black people here in the United States. And it will be happening in Malden as well. And according to a study done by Nature Conversations, which is a scientific journal of the nation's 175 largest urban areas, people of color in the U.S. were more likely than white people to live on what are called heat islands. This is the modern-day term for what once was called concrete jungles. Black people, according to the study of 175 cities, have the highest surface urban heat island exposure of any racial or ethnic group within, with Hispanics coming in second. This is important, people. We can't ignore this. It's easy for you, it's not easy for me to ignore it. It is not an issue of poverty. The nation's history of redlining and many other forms of housing discrimination have resulted in black people being marooned on heat islands regardless of their income. I'm not against youth sports. And nobody here, I don't think, that's speaking on behalf of Roosevelt Park and grass fields are against youth sports. I know the city is in need of additional athletic fields. Why in this neighborhood? Why don't you go to a neighborhood that has more trees and can mitigate the heat island impact?
It's been on 10 seconds.
Thank you.
So we have 14 minutes left. No, actually, I'm sorry. That took 14 minutes, did it? 14 minutes. Okay. Plus this one is 16 minutes. Okay, so we have a letter that is not about Roosevelt, which we're going to read now. And then what we're going to do, that will get us to eight, like we did at previous meeting. We'll take eight minus basically the 15 that we normally would hear. That leaves us seven. We'll read seven pros and cons that came in. And then we will attach all of the other emails that have come in to Granicus so that the councilors can read them all at their leisure. Okay? That's agreeable. This first paper that we're doing is in regard, this first letter that we're reading is in regard to Paper 221-23. And it's addressed to Counsel O'Malley. I am Christopher Dreher, resident of Mountain Avenue. My enthusiastic message here is to follow up on the success of the Malden compost program initially proposed to me via a suggestion to Mayor Christensen. The earnest hope and desire is to modernize our city to meet the environmental, economical, and social needs of our people by the implementation of a scrap metal and electronic waste recycling program. After learning about the enormous waste dilemma in the city, I am invigorated to share my recommendation for the maximization of the current Republic Services, which offers paperboard, e-waste, and appliance recycling. Justification for doubling efforts for the utilization of the present contract is that, after speaking to a public services representative recently, I learned that the potential for recycling is not optimized in this city. Once residents procure separation of elements labeled as waste and recycling, the economic magnitude of even recycling OCC, old corrugated containers, is actually net benefit on volume. Please consider the optimization of both the Republic Services Black Earth compost contracts with potential for scrap metal recycling contracts in addition to closely monitoring the efficiencies of the Malden Department of Public Works hauling. The immense shift from allocation of materials previously classified as waste as renewable resources is a fundamental necessity for the 21st century Malden. From economical, environmental, ethical, and even educational reasons, Malden is poised to be leaders for the future generation of citizens. There are ample aspects to curbing collection of trash, to incentivizing innovations in renewable resources. We, as the city of Malden, must design a most effective measure for sustaining our city. The best way to ensure for this is the conservation of the city's assets, including of the depreciated or waste categories. The emphasis on maximization of Republic Service Black Earth compost contracts and potential scrap metal recycling additional to the Malden Department of Public Works will help conserve and preserve the economic vitality of our city for present and prosperity communities. Sincerely, Christopher Dreher. Thank you.
I'm also told that it's not streaming on TV.
Uh-oh. They're not, we're not streaming?
They're working on it.
Oh.
It's on YouTube right now, they're working on it.
Oh, okay.
But it's not on TV, right?
It's not on TV at the moment.
But it's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube. Sharon's working on it.
Okay. Just for anyone listening, what we're talking about up here is the fact that MATV, or Uma, is not streaming on television at the moment. They are working on trying to resolve the problem. But it is being livestreamed on YouTube. So it is being recorded and will be played on MATV at the appropriate time. So, okay. Continuing with our. Just do. Yeah, no. See how long it goes, I'll put it on. To whom it may concern. I live at 21 Seaview Ave, Malden, Mass. I support the new synthetic turf project. Thank you, Brian McDonough. Dear Malden City Council, I am submitting these words for public comment for your meeting on May 23rd. After so many years of impassioned argument, it is time to finally settle the question of Roosevelt Park. I know minds are already made up, but I hope that my perspective as a 10-year volunteer of Malden Youth Soccer might help people understand the opportunity and importance of this project. Those of us who advocate so strongly for sports do so for reasons well beyond the score in some game. Organized sports help kids work together, grow strong, learn how to improve, and develop true confidence. Sports provide joy and meaning to so many families in our richly diverse city. These benefits must not be allowed to become exclusive, which is what will certainly happen if resources cannot meet the demand. Grass simply cannot withstand the needs of that space. With such a dramatic difference in usable hours, grass would force meat-cutting sacrifice on the thousands of Malden kids who partake in our sports. Every important question must balance challenging factors. How important are organized sports? What are the demonstrated risks of one solution over the other? Might choosing grass change the course of our environmental destiny? I have inspected these questions deeply and honestly. In conclusion, seem obvious. It would be unjust to burden kids with such a costly disproportionate and meaningless, sorry, meaningless sacrifice. I urge you to vote to approve the budget to finally return this field to service. We need this field back desperately and the delay has already caused too much harm. Doug Danoff, President of Malden Youth Soccer, 120 Glen Street. Yeah. Do you want me to alternate? Okay. To whom it may concern. I write in support of the Roosevelt Park renovation and urge you to move forward in building this project as soon as possible. Roosevelt Park serves Malden residents throughout the city and is especially important for residents of the immediate neighborhood and students of the Salemwood School. These residents are more diverse and lower-income than the rest of the city and they deserve a high-quality, climate-resilient park. Roosevelt Park suffers from flooding and contaminated soil, which limits playtime and endangers the neighborhood. The city's project would fix these problems by improving drainage, removing contaminated soil, and upgrading the field from grass to turf. Improving drainage is necessary to prepare the field and the surrounding neighborhood for climate change. The project will also remediate soil contamination so that has been discovered and make the field safe to play on for all users. By delaying the project, opponents have allowed these dangerous conditions to continue. The result is a contaminated field with increased flood risk, which could harm to the surrounding neighborhood and school if not addressed quickly. This project will also increase playtime for residents, the school, and athletic groups. The current field condition limits playtime at Roosevelt Park, which is mainly because of the field's drainage problems. The flooding will continue to damage the field and reduce playtime until fixed. Residents and students deserve full use of the park, which the current field cannot support. Upgrading the field from grass to turf will ensure maximum playtime for Malden residents while preparing the area for climate change. Combined with high demand from residents and students, the sad result is a Roosevelt Park that requires urgent attention. It is unacceptable to limit the ability of Malden residents, students, and athletic groups from using the park. Unfortunately, this will continue until the project is completed. Parks in other cities, parks, sorry, in other parts of the city have received millions of dollars for improvement, including Dever, Trafton, and Howard Park. And recent studies indicate that Belsmea Pond and Patchell Park will get more money as well. The city should invest at least that much money, if not more, in Roosevelt Park, a centrally-located park that serves a higher number of low-income residents of all ages who deserve a great park. Please move forward with this project as quickly as possible so Malden residents can have the park they deserve. Gillian Devershary. And then the fourth one says, hi there, I just wanted to say support. I support the proposed turf field at Roosevelt Park. Being a former player, having a turf field would benefit the city's youth. Ariana McDonough, 21 Seaview Ave. I am a resident who resides next to a once-beautiful public open area for Malden residents, Roosevelt Park. As I walked home from Everett Hospital the other day, I noticed how beautifully kept the Glendale Park is. The high school baseball team were playing a game. And then to see how Roosevelt Park has been allowed to be so unkept and neglected for years. Sure, we are building all these beautiful high-rise apartment buildings and removing the beautiful trees. Please stop destroying all of our beautiful spaces to play and gather together. We need Roosevelt. Our residents deserve a living, breathing space of natural grass. Joan Colburn, 20 Hyde Street. I am a fourth-generation Malden resident and 18-year homeowner in Ward 6, a formerly 45-year resident of Ward 5. I have two children who are first responders in Malden. One, a firefighter, has been made aware by his union of the cancer-causing issues regarding PFAS in the firefighters' equipment. I personally am very invested in the well-being of the city of Malden. My three children have all played sports on that field, football and softball, in the 1990s to 2012. My dad played on that field in the 1940s with best friend Ron Anderson, a cousin to former Councilman Neil Anderson. I myself attended concerts in the early '70s there as a teen. And I have worked at the Salemwood as a substitute school nurse from 2009 to 2014 and have seen the schoolchildren using that field. These children deserve better. They deserve what other schoolchildren in Malden have, a safe, clean, real-grass field. Please do not allow the PFAS plastic turf to be implanted in Roosevelt Park. This turf is very unhealthy for many reasons, including long-term toxic issues environmentally and physically for humans who use the field. As a resident of an area in Ward 6 that floods often, I am also concerned with the probability of the turf to amoralate that existing issue, despite what the pro-turf panelists have said. And yes, I have attended each meeting regarding this issue for several years now, either in person or by Zoom. Many towns and cities across America and Europe are removing and/or banning these turf fields. Knowing the problems associated with this turf, the Board of Health has an obligation to implement and uphold handy, healthy standards for its residents, even if it seems to be unpopular at this time. Sadly, Counselor Semenelli has evidently now reversed his decision and is again in favor of turf. This is surprising as toxicity is a battle he is mindful of in his own ward. As Counselor O'Malley and Counselor-at-Large Cologne Hayes have bravely tried to put forward this is not shutting the doors on sports in Malden. We love sports and keeping children active. It's important to their health. There is a possibility of utilizing other fields and negotiating schedules with other teams and with the city of Melrose at Pine Banks. The abutting residents of Dell Street and Placestead Road also need to be listened to for this is their neighborhood 24/7. Kim Strerit, RN, 73 Bowman Street. I am a resident of Malden all my life, 68 years. I am saddened by your lack of attention to the will of my community. We want living, breathable green grass at our beloved Roosevelt Park. Oh, thank you. Trying not to do duplicates.
It was the same email.
It was, it was the same. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I am a resident, she sent it twice. I am a resident living at 22 Parker Street in Malden. I enjoy casual use of Newman Park, such as games of badminton, and seeing others doing the same, such as grandpa kicking a soccer ball with a four-year-old. I treasure the trees around its perimeter when I walk laps around it for example.
I treasure the trees around its perimeter when I walk laps around it for exercise. I have not seen the city or sports advocates address equity, thermal comfort, or health concerns relating to the proposed use of artificial turf at Roosevelt Park. And I was puzzled to hear, at the one meeting I attended, that some of the hours spoken of as critical to include are for teams that don't even exist yet. This neighborhood, more than other neighborhoods in Malden, deserves a safe and cool place to play and exercise, and the schoolchildren can't be expected to cross Eastern Ave. to reach it. An artificial turf solution will not provide this. Having just spent millions to remove lead piping, the city's intent to install this generation's equivalent, PFAs, which can have ripple effects through the groundwater, is truly short-sighted and disappointing, especially in the wake of the hot delay of funding for equity issues that remain unaddressed. I hope you will support the neighbors surrounding Roosevelt Park, both those who are putting time into advocacy for natural grass for their neighborhood park and those who may not feel comfortable speaking up publicly. Amelia Thrall. Okay. I am a long-term Malden resident since 1988 and a parent who cares about our children's welfare and about racial and social justice. There is a plan for removing lead-contaminated grass in Roosevelt Park. However, the funding for contamination removal should only be approved if it is tied to the installation of natural grass. The artificial turf that is being proposed for Roosevelt Park is not a solution for the students of Salemwood School or the surrounding neighborhoods of Ward 7, Precinct 5-1, the most diverse in all of Malden, who have unjustly been excluded from the discussion, including not being allowed to speak at public meetings. And this conflict, conflation of issues leads to racial injustice in our city. Turf creates heat islands, which are unsafe. In the words of a coalition of regional environmental justice and conservation organizations in conjunction with the Friends of Roosevelt Park Malden, quote, "Cities like Malden should be taking steps to meet the demands of a warming climate, but the installation of an artificial turf field at Roosevelt Park would contribute to the urban heat island effect," end quote. This effect increases heat-related illnesses and mortality. Since the plastic surface can heat to unsafe temperatures of 140 to 170 degrees in the sun, and anything above 120 degrees could burn skin, artificial turf would create a hazard for anyone wanting to use the park on a warm sunny day, a hazard that could be avoided. Additionally, PFAS forever chemicals are embedded in the plastic or artificial turf carpet. The well-known health effects of PFAS are linked to reproductive issues, increased cancer risk, weakened immune systems, and high risk of obesity, known to hinder child development and growth, according to the aforementioned coalition. Turf is highly dangerous for our athletes with a 58% greater chance of injury due to harder-playing surface, in addition to the previously mentioned heat, which can go up to greater than 140 to 170 degrees, risking dehydration, heat stroke, poor athletic performance, and burns. And, as mentioned earlier, with turf, there is PFAS chemical exposure. In addition to the prior concerns, this also has known links to cancer and damage to endocrine nervous reproductive and immune systems. For all of these reasons, anything less than a plan for natural grass for Roosevelt Park is an injustice for this neighborhood and this school community. Fern Remedy Brown, 21 Ivy Road. Next order of business, please.
Approval of minutes. Paper 211-23, minutes for the meeting of May 9, 2023, and paper 212-23, minutes for the meeting of May 16, 2023.
Counselor O'Malley?
This is for approval of minutes.
I was having trouble bringing up the May 9 ones on my phone. Is it possible for us to table May 9th, so I can review them?
Sure.
So I'd move to table May 9th. Thank you.
Okay, so you're making a tabling motion.
Just for May 9th, I haven't had a chance to review it.
Do we have a second for that? Minutes from May 9th are tabled. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 16th? Motion by Counselor Seminelli to approve the minutes of May 16th, seconded by Counselor Winslow. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes of May 16th have been approved. Next order of business, please.
Paper 213-23, mayoral reappointment. Kevin Hawkins of 10 Hillside Road, Tewksbury, as the Inspector of Animals. Said term to expire April 30, 2024. Confirmation required.
Counselor Linehan for the paper.
Yep, I would make a motion that we approve on the floor, and I just wanted to explain there's a difference. This isn't the reappointment as animal control, this is the appointment as inspector of animals, which is a state designation, so it's a slightly different, very technical, but just for the explainer, that's what we're doing. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor McDonald. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, the, yeah, the appointment has been approved.
Councilor will hold a public hearing on Xnet petition to install fiber conduit. Paper 214-23, petition, Xnet Systems, 303 Warrenville Road, Suite 340. Project number 100523, Xnet Systems, seeking grant of location to install fiber conduit beginning at point approximately located at 244-248 Main Street, running up to approximately 22 Charles Street. Hearing required.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe, do you want to speak prior, or would you rather have him speak first? Okay. Thank you. If you would please state your name and address.
Yes, of course. Kenan Bryn, representing the applicant, Xnet Systems. My office is located at 100 Apollo Drive in Chelmsford, Mass. Xnet is seeking a grant of location to install a 4-inch fiber conduit in the public right-of-way. This conduit is proposed to go from the intersection of Main Street and Madison, around the corner to Charles Street. It's approximately six, probably about 650 feet, linear feet. There is a, the purpose of this is that there's no aerial poles in that area, so it's got to be put in the ground, so it will go from the pole on, actually, actually on Madison, down Main and around the corner to a pole on Charles Street. Actually, I met with Councilwoman Peg Crowe out on site, and we walked the, you know, the length of the 600-plus feet of, showed her where it was starting and where it was terminating. I think she had an additional conversation with DPW, but she can, she can attest to that regarding the work. There's also, in addition to the 4-inch fiber conduit, there's also another conduit that's going to be put in, what they, which they call city shadow duct, and that's basically a spare, in the event that somebody comes along and needs a space within the conduit, they would have, they would have conduit already in place for them to use without having to dig up the street again. So it's pretty typical. So those are the basic elements. I can get into some of the construction questions and processes maybe at the subcommittee meeting, but if Councilwoman Crowe wants to elaborate, I'd be happy to hear.
Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, Madam President. The, so I did meet out at the site, and it is going to do the trench along the gutter line, all the way up there, and I did talk to Bobby and to Yem, our city engineer. And so, you know, just one of the things, and one of the things we had talked about out there is I didn't want a little zipper over there along the gutter line, so I did follow up with, with the DPW and our city engineer, and so, and I, did you have a chance to talk to them?
The construction manager did, but...
All right, well, because I did ask them to kind of reach out to them, to make sure that they knew what the, the repaving, the milling and overlay is going to have to look like as, as part of this. So the, if it's under five years, it goes curb-to-herb, there are parts of the, that street that are under five years, so that'll have to be curb-to-herb. And then there is a piece of it that's still in good shape, but it's right around the, the, we're redoing all of Madison Street anyway, so it's not necessarily there in that area, but down Main Street around the corner to Charles Street. So that'll be part of the conditions about having the street curb-to-herb.
That's our understanding. It would be curb-to-herb, mill and pave from the pole on Madison, you know, down Main and around the corner to Charles Street. And Xnet asked me to advance this application with that understanding.
Great. All right. Okay, do we have a, do we have a public hearing? Do you want to do more comments from here, or do you want to do the public hearing? It doesn't matter.
Do they just make comments now, or wait for...
Public comment.
You can make comments now if you want to. Counselor Winslow?
I mean, I did review the plans. The plans are based on some old, old things. They don't show the Northern Strand Trail crossing there, and we did just recently do a complete streets thing, and I, and I know in particular, I looked at Plan UT4, and there's a proposal for a manhole, and it's very hard to tell where that sits. And I think the other thing is that this is not just the city right-of-way that you're crossing, there is the MBTA right-of-way that the, the trail goes through, so, so I, that's, I'm just concerned that those details, I couldn't really tell. I mean, I definitely don't want a manhole in the middle of the, the crosswalk. I mean, Peg might have seen that, but I just was concerned the plans were very confusing, the, the match lines were very laid out, the, the Northern Strand Trail was not indicated on the plan, so I guess I'd like to table it until they come back and show those plans. So that would be, I'd like to see that, that it's very clear what they're going to do. And the other thing is that the Northern Strand has special crosswalks, so we want to make sure that, that, that is part of the redo, that there's actually some special crosswalks that were put in for that just in the past year or so. So I, I just, it's confusing the plan, I can't really identify from the plans of that. And we've had two projects to work on that area for the trail, and I just don't want it to be ignored, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor, we'll stay, stick with the counselors. Counselor Seminelli?
The light was on, I got nothing.
Oh, okay. Counselor Spatafora?
I just got a general question. So what is the fiber for?
It's, Xnet has a number of small cells in the city of Malden, and this is to essentially kind of connect the ones that don't already have fiber to them. So this would get you from the aerial pole on Madison and then over to an aerial pole on Charles, and that would make the connection.
So are those two, and don't take this the wrong way, this is what pisses me off about telecommunications, because you're talking about fiber in the ground, but what we're really talking about is 5G antennas, right?
Not at this point, but potentially.
Not at this, so you're asking for a permit, and again, don't take this personally, so you're asking for a permit, but the outcome's going to be you want to put two more 5G cells somewhere.
Not at this time.
But at one point.
Potentially.
Yeah, I would, I motion to table two, because this is, this is the challenge I have, is, is, and again, it's not this company, but the same thing happened in Highland Ave. Where they, they, they say they're putting a pole up, but they never, the utility company never tells you they're coming in, and it's a new pole, and then we talk about, you know, more poles and sidewalks and accessibility. Go down Highland Ave, there, there are three poles on Highland Ave that were put up specifically for 5G antennas, and again, I'm not, this is not towards you. We've asked both Verizon and I believe National Grid several times for a list of double poles, they don't want to provide that. So I'm motion to table this, I, I'm not for any more 5G around here. That's just switching bait, in my opinion. Thank you, Madam President.
So we have two motions to table. So. No, Counselor Crowe?
You want something, Cookie?
Did you want to say something?
I'm fine with the tabling motion. Actually, when I did talk to our city engineer, he was, he didn't talk about all the different things that Counselor Winslow did, but he did indicate that it's going to be returned to the way it was when they got in there, but I'm happy to make sure that we have, we're all in the, the right communication and it's done properly.
I just want to make sure, especially that manhole, I couldn't help the plan to wear that late because...
And, okay, I'll, we can take a closer look at that, and for the record, we do have a license with the MBTA.
Okay, good.
Counselor O'Malley?
So I just want to confirm that Counselor Winslow, your motion is to table pending the applicant providing additional or updated engineering plans showing the Northern Strand?
Yes, that's, that's basically my table.
Is that everyone's understanding? Okay, thank you.
I know we have a motion to table on the floor, but we also were going to have a public hearing, so we kind of did the, our discussion before the public hearing, so I'm going to proceed with the public hearing to see if anyone in the audience has anything that they would like to add to this, and then we'll take up the tabling motion. So you may step away from the podium, sir, if you don't mind, and I will open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition? If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and address. If anyone would like to come speak in favor of this petition, please come to the podium, state your name and address. And for the last time, if anyone would like to speak in favor, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one and hearing no one, I will declare that portion of the public hearing closed. If anyone would like to speak in opposition to the petition, please come to the podium and state your name and address. If anyone would like to speak, oh, you have someone coming up? Yay. If you would state your name and address, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Christopher Dreyer. I'm actually the author of that letter that was prior, but I'm not going to reference that, but as to embedding in-ground fiber optic cable, that's antiquated technology at this point. I don't want to comment about whatever investment is being put forth, but we have entered the technology now, 5G wireless-threaded, like, not just wireless capability, but just energy capability, and it's, it's well-known to be able to create a, both local area networks and also just vast other networks, so basically, both fiber optic and also just other technologies that are mentioned are actually now obsolete because of the 5G laser technology. I can put ample reference to that. It's now being used even in other sectors. So there's like, like, it's used and used to do underwater communication through, like, just lasers, basically, because it can be put on the same electromagnetic frequency. So I just don't think the project is necessary nor beneficial, and fiber optic networks are actually going the way of the dodo, but that's just too direct in stating that, sorry. Thank you.
Christopher, will you leave? I'm not sure if you stated your address, if you could just repeat it again.
Oh, yeah, I live at 166 Mountain Ave, apartment number 37, Malden, Massachusetts, 02148.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So continuing with the public hearing, anyone wishing, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Ian, for the final time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Seeing none and hearing none, I declare that portion of the public hearing closed. We have a motion to table the petition from Counselor Winslow, seconded by Counselor Spatafora. All those in favor? Aye. I'm sure you'll be dealing with Counselor Crowe to continue the discussion, and Counselor Winslow?
I'll sit.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Next order of business, please.
Paper 215-23, petition, pool tables, Club 24, 787 Salem Street, two tables renewal. Paper 216-23, petition, open-air parking lot, Emmanuel Baptist Church, 20 Madison Street, 27 spaces renewal. Paper 217-23, petition, secondhand dealer, AM Design Jewelry, 664 Salem Street, renewal. Paper 218-23, petition, pool tables, Italian American War Vets, Post 16, 40 Oakland Street, one table, renewal.
Okay, on Counselor Condon's motion to refer to license. All those in favor? Aye. The petitions have been referred to license. Next order of business, please.
Paper 219-23, order, the fiscal year 2024 annual appropriation order, and we have a letter introducing it from Mayor Christensen.
Please read the letter, and then we'll turn it over to Counselor McDonald.
Dear members of the City Council, I am pleased to present a balanced budget for fiscal year 2024, which covers the period from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. While balanced, this budget does require the use of one-time funds, which is something we all need to be aware of as we think about our collective goals in future budgets. We are, I believe, entering a new phase that will impact our local finances in a myriad of ways. I have mentioned, multiple years in a row, the anticipated cost increases associated with public education. We know the great work that was done by our state delegation in delivering for our public schools through the student opportunity... through the Student Opportunity Act. And this year, Malden benefited greatly with an additional $9 million in Chapter 78. I've also reminded everyone of the additional burden that the Student Opportunity Act will place on our local finances. The formula that drives the local contribution component is deeply flawed and will continue to overburden our local finances with required contribution increases that will force us to make some tough decisions in other areas of city services. At the same time, this year's budget reflects the continued ramp up in our share of the debt associated with the Northeast Voc Building Project, which, at the full run rate in two years, will result in an annual cost of about $1.3 million for Malden. Both will be key drivers for us in future budget planning, and they are things we will not have any control over. On the revenue front, FY '24 shows that revenue is slowing across the board, which is consistent with what is being reported at the state level. Last year in particular, our budget benefited from significantly increased local receipts, which were benefited from the return to normal. Clearly, that pattern is changing as everything from new growth to mail taxes to excise taxes levels off. As I mentioned at the beginning, these things tend to run in waves, so this is unlikely to be a one-year trend. On the expense front, the FY '24 budget reflects several trends that we should all be mindful of as they are likely to impact future budgets. In addition to the education cost drivers outlined above, our healthcare consultants have advised us to plan on significant claim increases for FY '24. We have talked often about the impact of COVID on the healthcare system, the delay in elective procedures, and in general, the uncertainty it injected into the healthcare systems. Locally, that had the positive effect of capping healthcare cost increases the past couple of years. Those days appear to be ending. This budget reflects a 7.5% increase in costs. And even at that, we are at the very low end of where our consultant has advised us to be. This has the potential to significantly impact our budget for the next few years. For many years now, we have been in a low interest rate environment, which has been very friendly to municipal finances. The cost of money has been extremely low by any historic standard, and the low inflationary environment has kept the lid on the increase in personal costs, our number one expense. Both of those trends have ended. We've all seen the spike in interest rates, and that increases our costs for every borrowing we undertake. Perhaps even more significantly, our employees have, of course, been hit by the rising cost of everything. And with that comes the expectation that the cost of living increases will keep pace. This is all happening as we find revenues flattening out and other costs increasing. On a positive note, we have continued to utilize the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity presented by the American Rescue Plan Act in a way that will leave a lasting impact on our community, while also helping to take some pressure off of future local budgets. We have put these funds to work in a way that has allowed us to do things we might not otherwise have been able to do or would have done, so at the expense of something else. Of course, these funds end in December of 2024. It will require adjustment and discipline to recognize that. Given all of the above, the reality will be that we simply can't continue opera-funded initiatives without sacrificing something else in its place. This budget also reflects the third year presenting the budget using ClearGov platform. The implementation of the new online budgeting tool last year represented a tremendous leap forward by the city in modernizing our budget process, increasing the depth of information shared with the public, and generally making the annual budget a more comprehensive exercise. We were thrilled when our efforts were recognized with our first-ever Government Finance Offices Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is the gold standard for budgets, and we should all be proud to have achieved this recognition. I expect that each year, we will fine-tune our use of this new platform and improve our budgeting process going forward. Each year, the budget not only sets the financial plan for our community, but also acts as a policy document, an operations guide, and a communications tool. To that end, we are embracing our commitment to sustainability and the environment by presenting the budget for review by the City Council utilizing the online digital budget book. I know you will find this easy to navigate as you review and discuss the budget. This budget book also includes appropriations and relevant data for three additional funds, specifically the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, Community Preservation Act Fund, and the Cable Access Enterprise Fund. Please note that the appropriation order for the general fund is less than the total budget shown in this document as several line item expenses are funded through assessments from the state, which do not require an appropriation. In following best practices recommended by ClearGov and the GFOA, we will continue to add content to the digital budget book prior to the final submittal of the same for the GFOA award. In closing, the FY '24 budget is hereby submitted as a fiscally responsible plan in a foundational basis of the city's annual operations. I would like once again to thank Chief Strategy Officer Ron Hogan and Chief Financial Officer Chuck Ranigan, who have been working on this budget and for the continued improvement of our transformative approach since January. I also want to thank our department heads who actively participated in the budget process through this platform. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Gary Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. D'Arcio. Councillor McDonald for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm honored to be the Finance Chair, which means that my name is attached to this paper, but it is not actually my budget. It was developed, as the mayor said, by the finance staff for the city. And so I want to thank them for their hard work to get us to this point. We are inside the 45-day window till the end of the fiscal year. So we've got a, we've got a lot of Finance Committee meetings ahead of us. And I just wanted to take a minute to give you all the preliminary schedule. Next Tuesday, we're going to have an overview with our Chief Strategy Officer and Chief Financial Officer, overview of the budget, and we'll also be discussing revenue sources for finance. The following, Thursday, so June 1st, we're going to add a special Finance Committee meeting to hear from other city departments. I sent a message to all department heads asking if any of them were particularly interested in appearing before us. We're obviously not going to have time to talk to everyone. But as I have said in previous council meetings, if there's a particular department you would like to hear from after going through the budget that you've now received, and I'm told is live online, please let me know, and we'll see if we can get them in. I did already ask the Department of Public Works, because I know that we always have questions for the DPW. And Director Knox graciously agreed to come on the first. On Tuesday, June 6th, we're going to have our Schools Department in to talk about both school funding and anything else education-related. That's where the major action is happening in this budget. A lot more money going into the School Department, which is due to, as the mayor said, you know, the implementation of the Student Opportunities Act. So we're going to spend the whole day, the whole meeting then, on June 6th, talking with the Schools Department. On June 13th, we're going to plan for our public hearing. So that public notice will go out. And that might, that will, we're still working on how that evening will go, but that would also be a time for the council to discuss any potential changes that we'd like to recommend or request to the budget. And then we'll plan for a committee vote on Tuesday, June 20th. And that gives us an extra buffer of one week in case we need another meeting or something else happens. We're not taking it down to the wire already, because the following week is the final Tuesday of the fiscal year. So I will send that again to you all in an email. I'm hoping to publish the schedule so that folks know what to expect. We are going to make sure that all of the Finance Committee meetings are Zoom accessible so that folks can participate in this key process of the City Council and watch and learn what's going on. So that's the heads up. Please let Lisa know if you have department heads you'd like to request, and stay tuned for more information. And with that, I'd be happy to make a motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
On Councillor McDonald's motion to refer to the Finance Committee, seconded by Councillor Simonelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The paper has been referred to Finance.
Thank you.
We're good. Next order of business, please.
Paper 225-23, order.
Oh. I just, did we act on papers 215, 23, 16, 17?
Yes, they referred to license. Councillor Condon referred them to license, and Councillor Sika's absent.
Thank you. Paper 225-23, order. At the call of the President, allowable by Council Rule 1.04, and with the majority of the body in agreement, a special meeting of the Malden City Council shall be held on Wednesday, June 7, 2023, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of holding a public hearing on MBTA community zoning.
So as the council knows, there is a committee that has been set up that Councillor Winslow, Councillor Spatafora sit on, working with the Office of Strategic Planning and Development. And our, Michelle Romero from our Planning Department. This part of the process for the MBTA overlay that has been being discussed is that we have a public hearing. The public hearing needs to, we had a few dates that we could do it. This was one of the dates that was available. As this says, in order to schedule a meeting outside of our regular council meetings, we do need the agreement of the council. So that is why this paper is on the docket. As I can't really make the motion, I'm kind of looking to Councillor Spatafora or Councillor Winslow. I don't know if you'd like to say anything else, either one of you, where you are on the committee. Councillor Winslow?
No, I just, I'll make the motion. And yeah, I mean, we're working on, you know, we are getting some back and forth. More, a lot more, you know, a bit more work that needs to be done before we're ready. But that work is going ahead with our consultants. So I plan to be ready by June 7th and share what the recommendations are and have that discussion.
And it's basically a public comment to kind of move forward and see how you're going to continue the discussion, which will be ongoing throughout the summer. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay. Councillor Spatafora, do you second that?
I do.
Motion. So on Councillor Winslow's motion to adopt the order seconded by Councillor Spatafora, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The order has been adopted. So if everyone will please put June 7th in your calendar, we need a full council here. So, thank you. Okay, councillors, we do have a councillor who's not feeling well at the moment, and so has made a request that we kind of move, shift the papers around. So I'm going to go to the committee reports, and then we'll take the resolves up after that. So that just, so we're going to go to Item 11, committee reports. So it's paper, it'll be 223-23. So it's on page.
223-23 Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper 139, series of 2023, having considered the same, make the following report. The Finance Committee reported the paper out with no recommendations to the full council. A majority of the Finance Committee sought the full council's support for an estimate of a plan for a grass-based field and for a field with a grass comparable substrate.
On Councillor McDonald's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The committee report is received. Would you please read the paper?
Paper 139-23, order that $1.3 million of available general fund free cash is appropriated to fund additional costs associated with the improvements to Roosevelt Park.
Councillor McDonald for the paper.
So I just want to speak as the committee chair about the process, and then I'm sure we'll all have a lot to say as individual councillors. We had three meetings of the Finance Committee to review this paper and 139, excuse me, 14023, the two papers on Roosevelt Park. We had lots of discussion, lots of good information. It was my goal, certainly, to have the chance to dig into questions that we had to fulfill our fiduciary duty. I think we got some good information. Particularly, I want to appreciate our Athletic Director Charlie Convery and our Recreation Department for putting together some really excellent figures on the demands and usage of our various fields. And in the, in the end, in our third, in our third committee meeting, the group voted unanimously to send this back to the council without a recommendation. And that is in part because we know the full council will need to weigh in on this. But there was also a majority of the members of the Finance Committee who really had wanted to be able to review what a full grass plan cost estimate would look like. We also had a request to be able to look at, as I said, what a substrate that was grass compatible, so underneath the surface, but had turf on top of it would look like. And so recognizing that that's a bit of work for our consultants and staff, we thought that it would only be fair to proceed with that essentially design question if there was support from the full council to move in that direction. So that's what the recommendation of the committee is, is to see whether there is support for that or not, and to have the conversation at the full council level, which we knew we would always need to have. So thank you, everybody, for your participation in what was a strongly felt and well-discussed conversation in our Finance Committee. And I'm sure we'll have more to say today. So that's from the chair.
Thank you, Councillor McDonald. And I have a number of lights on. Councillor Simonelli, you are first.
Thank you, Madam President. And I agree with the chairman from Finance. We've had lengthy discussions since I called this council back in January, when I was inaugurated back in a year or so ago. And I know that you've had plenty of meetings prior to that for like three or four years. And listening to the Recreation Department, and like I said, doing my homework that I did and checking out the fields and checking out all the youth programs. And we don't have enough park space as it is. And I don't recommend putting soccer leagues and other kind of leagues on our passive parks, because that's what they were designed for, or for passive recreation 20 years ago. And it gets, and I know in my neighborhood, the passive parks get great use. So I think I've heard enough. So my, I'm going to make a motion that Paper 223-23 be voted out on the floor. That's my motion. Motion to approve.
Paper 139 is what we're talking about? 130, okay, 130, oh, yeah, it's, I'm sorry. Yeah, this confuses me all the time, Councillor Simonelli.
Because we've had a lot.
There's actually two numbers. It's actually Paper 13923.
Yeah, so 123, Paper 1, yeah, and 13923. And be voted out favorably.
Oh, second there.
Okay. We have two seconds, actually. Seconded by Councillor Simonelli, I'm sorry. Motion made by Councillor Simonelli to move the paper out favorably, seconded by Councillor Sika. All those in favor?
No.
No, roll call.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Give her a second, she'll get there. I was doing sidebar conversations going on here, so, okay. So we have a number of lights on here. So we have a motion on the floor.
Motion.
But we aren't, we have. That's because Councillor O'Malley keeps shutting it off. Hey, we have to have some lightness here, you know what I mean? So it's not.
It's been a long day.
So we have a motion by Councillor Simonelli, seconded by Councillor Sika. Okay, we do have lights on, so we'll have some discussion, so.
Well, can we, we can entertain my motion?
We can, but I think it just, we have, the motion is on the floor. So that's just out of courtesy. We'll, we have some lights on, and we normally, we do that, so. Councillor Hayes?
Thank you. So I agree, there's been a lot of discussion on this, and it's been healthy. And I want to particularly say thank you to everybody who came up today, especially our youth. I love hearing from them, so thank you for that. And, but I'm going to be voting no on this. We need to move forward with this project for sure. But it's with real grass, which is what the neighbors at Roosevelt deserve. As an at-large, I have to weigh in all the pieces. And ward councillors are always talking about not coming into their ward and making decisions for them. So I feel the same for Salemwood and the Salemwood School and their kids. So they are the ones, the small kids, are the ones that are going to be exposed every day. And I'm giving a voice to our youngest residents, our children. Those are the ones who are at most risk by health risks with funding that will put, you know, turf down on this grass. So we've not received a cost comparison that we had asked for, so that's why we were bringing this to the floor. Without, you know, a recommendation, I'd like to see that cost comparison with real data. And in addition, I was at the Board of Health meeting last night, and they postponed. And in addition, I was at the Board of Health meeting last night, and they postponed their recommendation until the end of June. I'd like to hear what they have to say before voting for this. Former Fire Chief Jack Colangi put a motion actually forward to stop the project due to the health risks that were associated with PFAS and putting together a bigger heat island. So that was voted down because they wanted to have more time to view. So I'm voting no, because I want to hear from the Board of Health, and I'd like to see some cost comparisons. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Colon Hayes. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that what is important to know for the public is that we do not have the votes to entertain grass. That does not mean that those of us who support grass are in favor of turf. It doesn't mean that we've given up on it. Like I've said pretty consistently, the only way that we're going to get grass at this point is if we are able to compromise with the mayor and the council. I hope that that is still possible. I think there's still opportunity there. I've been consistent here, but does not mean I've given up. I hope that we still get that. I know that there is a paper right after this, that it's going to be remediating the contamination down to three feet. I think that is an amazing next step. I hope we take that step as soon as possible, and I do hope that we are open to compromise on all sides. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Thank you. You know, tonight we have two papers on Roosevelt Improvement Project that will make a major investment in a neighborhood and next to a school that have not had a major investment in decades. We all know kids are more observant than we think, and they certainly can see that nothing has been happening at Roosevelt for most of their time at Salemwood School. Though some seek to characterize tonight's vote as turf versus grass conflict, turf versus grass conflict, Councilor Sika was right a few weeks back when she noted that the majority of the council has repeatedly voted in favor of turf after, you know, consideration. Tonight's vote is not about turf versus grass, but about whether we as a community continue to move forward to make a bold investment for the future of our kids after years of inaction.
Yeah, yeah.
There have been many Maldonians over the decades that have made bold investment for Malden kids and fields in the past. Nearly 100 years ago, Maldonians worked to establish parks throughout Malden as they saw their rural farm community urbanizing very quickly. By the time the parks movement gained momentum in communities like Malden, the only land left tended to be where no one else had built, wet areas prone to flooding that no one could really have a house or a business on, or where someone actually had tried to build and only to be flooded out. So that's why Roosevelt Field is what it is. You know, Maldonians who helped create Roosevelt Field soon realized that flooding was a problem. And they, in the 1930s, and then again in the 1980s, paid for drainage programs for Roosevelt Field, including the installation of the Saugus Branch culvert that runs from Roosevelt through Malden Center to the Malden River. And even after those efforts, Maldonians who grew up playing at Roosevelt, such as former councillor Neil Anderson, who lived and grew up on Playstead Road, all have tales about the frequently muddy conditions that they played on as kids. A few years after I moved to Malden, in the early 90s, with the Malden schools falling apart, Mayor Howard led a bold and nearly as controversial plan to build five new elementary schools, several of which, including Salemwood and Ferry, were permanently going to take parkland for schools. The school plan required, though, that the Malden Public Elementary Schools be desegregated, so we would provide more equal education to all Malden school kids, because their schools were not, were very segregated at that time. So my own advocacy for Roosevelt and the future Salemwood kids started with those planning meetings. When I saw the first proposal for Salemwood School, the entirety of parkland that wasn't the school was going to be a parking lot. We wouldn't even have this debate, because it would have been parking. I made comments at that public meeting that maybe this city should put parking under the fieldhouse, so that we wouldn't have to pave over the whole field. And thanks to Mayor Howard and the MRA staff, they listened to that. But they came back and said, you know, that's maybe half the parking we need? That's not enough for this big of a school. So they reached out to me as then head of Bike to the Sea and said, you know, if we work with the MBTA and use half the rideaway for parking and half for a bike trail, we can have this school and we can have a large field next to that. And because of my willingness to be, work with the city, we were able to have a bike trail, we were able to save a field there, the city secured $90 million in state funding to build five new elementary schools, desegregate our schools. We made a $10 million investment, because we worked. I can't say that wasn't controversial, there were people, you know, tying themselves to trees at Ferryway, but we made a big investment, and our kids today continue to benefit from that. I reject the notion that our vote tonight is an environmental injustice. In fact, my major motivation was to try to remedy past injustices that I've seen since I was in Malden. The genesis of the current Roosevelt project goes to the development of the 2017 Malden Open Space and Recreation Plan. I've served on the last two committees in 2010 and in 2017, where we developed that plan. And serving on that committee in 2017, I said to the Malden redevelopment authority and MAPC, who were working on it, well, what progress do we make in those seven years? And they had a good list of projects, Howard Park and Pine Banks Park being the primary ones. And the city had made about $20 million improvements in those parks, in parks throughout the city. But one of the things I observed was that Howard Park and Pine Banks Park, the biggest investments the city made between 2010 and 2017, we had actually used CDBG money and Gateways Community Money, money targeted for low-income communities, to build fields that were benefiting primarily kids that, for regional schools or Melrose. It was absurd to me that we just spent so much money to actually not do anything. Roosevelt, we had spent $60,000 during that period. So that really appalled me, and that is part of what you call systematic inequities. So I thought that we should take that on. So we had a public outreach process, and I insisted, because of that inequity, that we'd make outreach to our whole community. And we held a big meeting at the Malden YMCA, where we made special efforts to shout to the whole community, and we had a big community survey. And what did that community survey say? This is all before Roosevelt was even talked about. The community overwhelmingly said that we do not have enough multi-use fields, particularly those that serve soccer. And when you looked at it, you know, and that's not surprising, our demographics have changed. And since the 1950s, when we first built a bunch of baseball fields that Councilor Anderson grew up using, we now have a lot more kids playing soccer. So we have twice as many people, kids playing soccer now than we did 30 years ago. We used to have four little leagues, now we have one. We have a major soccer league. So soccer's a lot harder on fields and it takes more space. And that was the major comment, one of the major comments out of our open space plan that we did. And as a result, our open space plan in 2017, the third goal of that plan was to improve maintenance of our fields, but also to increase the number of multi-use fields, particularly those that could be used for soccer. So when I was elected in council at large in 2018, one of my first meetings with Mayor Christensen and reaching out to Councilor Murphy as the work councillor, was to talk about investing in Roosevelt Field for the Salemwood kids. That's it is. This is about investing in our kids. In the same way the city had directed funds to Howard Park and Pine Banks, we needed to invest in the Salemwood kids, just like we did with the MC kids, the Mystic Valley kids, and the Melrose kids. So at my first meeting with the mayor, I mean, I had listened to Kathy Sullivan, I met with her, and I asked specifically for that updated cost estimate, and I advocated for that cost comparison between turf and grass. And it actually, I got something at that time. I, you know, Hayner Swanson, who's here tonight, they estimated about that time that, you know, a, you know, we hadn't even gone to the full design of the turf field at that point, but a grass field would probably cost at that time, you know, 2018, $500,000 more than a grass field. And that was primarily due to the cost to remove the contaminated soils, because you had to go, you know, at least, you know, 18 inches deeper. And, but I knew that someone who's worked in hazardous waste cleanup and actually secured EPA grants for parks, that that wasn't an overwhelming grant. I felt confident that the funding was not the issue. But what surprised me at that meeting was a voice that came out of the far corner of the room, a voice of someone that has a real can-do attitude for Malden, our DPW Director, Bob Knox. And Bob got straight to the point, Steve, you can invest that $3 million plus on a grass field in Roosevelt, and I can tell you in three years, that field will look just as bad as it down now, it's just too wet. And what I realized immediately is that Bob's comment rung true, based on what I had done with other communities. I had seen and worked in Gloucester with a similar field at Newell Stadium along the Adnysquon River, which was very low land, flooded constantly by storm water from the neighborhood above, and that community had fenced off their field, they had only varsity sports use it, and that booster club raised tens of thousands of dollars every year to resaw it, and yet it was still in poor condition. And they made the commitment to invest in their kids to build that field. And I just, that field's been there 10 years, and I was out there last month, and I'm going to hand you around the picture, we actually actually built, next to that same turf field, we built a grass field for practice. And here is the picture, just last month, of the practice, grass practice field at Newell Stadium versus the turf field at Newell Stadium. And you can see that Bob's prediction comes true, that grass trying to grow in a floodplain that is highly used is very difficult to keep up. And you look at this turf field after 10 years, it's great. So that's one of the things. So I just say that's something we have to be aware of. And you can even see this locally in Malden. You look at, we have turf at Coitmore Lear Park and Ferryway Playground. And Shepherd School tried to do grass at Peggy's Park. You go by Peggy's Park, there's not a scrap of grass left there, because just too many damn kids playing. So I think that's the type of thing, what's the better investment? So I want to say why I will vote in favor of this paper tonight. So first of all, I know we have comments about the health of our kids, and I see Marcia holding up her sign there. Well, prior to COVID, and still of a concern to this day, is obesity, one of the top health issues for both kids and adults, and far more important for low-income people and people of color. And I had the privilege during my work with Mass in Motion to sit in to the development of new state public health plan, where they looked at all the data from every disease, every death, and they were, they looked at everything. And what was the, one of the big things, obesity. So what we hear about is that was an overwhelming concern, and one of the things about addressing obesity is make sure that kids develop lifelong habits of activity and eating healthy. And so one of the things that I see, and this is what came out during the Finance Committee related, the Rec Department, is both in 2017, when we looked at the, you know, open space and recreation used then and now, is that there's still a big need for soccer fields, and that also that by choice, our turf fields are being used two or three times more frequently than the equivalent grass field. So when you talk about costs, you really have to figure out what would the cost to build two more grass fields, because that's not something you can do it, you can't get that three times as much use at Roosevelt, because you really can't use a grass field that much. So that's one of the things. And then, so as we heard in Finance, as it was in 2017, we still need full-size recreation fields. Soccer continues to be an underserved, as we had heard. We have twice as many kids using, wanting to play soccer, playing soccer, but they have barely the same amount of field time as our baseball kids, which is really unfair. The demographics of Malden has changed, and we really need to do that. And fields like Trachten or Coitmore Lear, where, you know, we can try to put some little soccer thing, like Amridge or something there, but that's not going to serve the older kids. And actually, one of the things, often the hard thing, is that physical activity drops off most for those older kids. Younger kids are going to get their exercise, it's the middle school and high school kids that really need it the most. So, you know, and I recently, the fore said, I mean, I've just, talking about possibilities of compromise, you know, there was a proposal that, given Mayor Christensen's proposal, we looked at maybe looking at Maplewood as a full-size field. But when we vetted that with our youth soccer leaders, you know, we literally came within an hour of announcing the proposal, and they're out there with our kids tonight, that's why they're not here, that Doug sent in a letter, because he's out there with coaching kids out there, like so many of our other parents. But what Doug told me was that, and he sent me a video, that, yeah, they have a permit for Maplewood Park, but there's two other groups that don't have a permit using it at the same time. So they just felt like they're, just expanding Maplewood Park didn't expand use. So I think that's the other thing. So without really purchasing land for new, more fields, that's the only way to ensure you have an equivalent of what we're investing in for Roosevelt. So, so in terms of Heat Island, you know, I appreciate the comments that the friends have brought forward there, and the project has made real and valuable changes that are going to help that. We shrunk the field by 10%. We added 10 trees, we're using a natural infill that is much cooler than standard crumb rubber. And we, as a city, let's not forget, we're adding 2,500 trees, in which according to a recent UCLA study, are way more effective in reducing temperatures than grass. I think we're making progress on Heat Island. For my internal friends in the audience, my vote here tonight does not mean that it will not continue to strive and prove our environment, or keep our kids safe from hazardous chemicals. As you know, that even as we strive, there are no such thing as environmental saints here. You know, I admit, the other day I bought 30% recyclable paper, not 100% recyclable paper. I don't always buy organic goods. Since we bought our house, we reduced our greenhouse emissions by 80%, not 100%. So environmental goals, sometimes, particularly those that are in competition with each other, we need to be, make practical compromises. And I think also I have to say that, you know, from my knowledge from chemistry class and my environmental work, the reality is, is human beings have been creating forever chemicals since we first sat around campfires. And we have fine evidence of those from the South Pole, the Mount Everest. There's no escaping some environmental impact from any choice we make, whether large or small. I think that you look at the Board of Health, there was a very good presentation about the particular things related to turf field, and I think that really was helpful for me to understand, that PFA's are a very complicated class of chemicals, and what firefighters use is different, and that is anything related to PFA's, and sometimes what people are finding are things that have fallen. So therefore, I think the other thing that I want to hand out, I went down to the Mystic River and Bike to the Sea every year has a ride down there. We welcome people to learn about the river, and I happened to go up to a friend's house who's near the Healy School. And I invite everybody, this Friday in Somerville, at the Healy School, which sits above their housing project, they are actually having a ribbon cutting for a turf field. So the fact that a community that is, a community of color, that is right next to their lowest-income housing, has gone through the process and made a decision to go with turf fields, tells me this isn't about racism, this is about making practical and pragmatic decisions that are good investments for our kids. And that's why I'm going to vote tonight in favor of turf. Thank you very much.
Great, great.
Yeah.
Okay. I forgot what I was going to say. I'm very familiar with McDonald Stadium, Soap Broadway, and that's all you hear is eight to 10 years you'll be putting in a new turf field. That's a falsehood. There's no question in my mind, if you do the maintenance, that somebody like Joe Levine does. does, and preaches around the city to other people taking care of those parks, he's on his 12th year. That field looks brand new. Soap Broadway, I think they're going up nine, 10 years right now. That park looks fantastic, too. So if if we don't last longer than 10, 12, 14 years, it's because we failed and do the, didn't do the proper maintenance like we should. Because if we do the maintenance and do that deep vacuum cleaning and have them run the tests and replace what's used to build that turf field, it certainly can, as far as I'm concerned, Joe's going to probably last another 10 down there. Field looks brand new, you know, and it's almost 12 years old. So I am definitely going to vote for the artificial turf. It expands the time the kids have to play on the surface. And it's not so much the varsity, it allows the JVs and the younger kids to develop. And that's important. It's important to keep those kids thinking that there's a future, someday they'll reach that varsity sports level. So I am clearly going to vote for this, and and I think it'll be good for the kids to be able to get out of recess, go to recess, and play on the turf field, too, where normally they'd stay in, because it is a mud bowl. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Condon. Councilor McDonald.
Well, thanks, everybody. This should only take about 20 minutes on my part, so. I'm just teasing you, Steve. What I want to say is that, so I live probably the closest of any of us, I think, to Roosevelt Park. It's my voting precinct, and I can just attest that the park needs some help. It badly needs to be redone, as I think we all agree. And I wish that there were a different proposal that we had in front of us to vote on today. That's what I, that's what I would have liked to see. I want to give credit to the mayor and mayor's staff for exploring a compromise alternative that would involve rebalancing a bunch of different pieces of our recreation plan. I wish we had had the chance to vote on that, because it would have had my support, I think, but hadn't had the chance to be able to dig into the details about that. I absolutely agree, we need multi-use fields. I think we could find a way to balance that across the portfolio of fields and projects that we are working on right now and make grass work at Roosevelt Park. I'm concerned about the environmental impacts of turf. Now, Malden will still have turf fields, one way or another, with this project. But I, but I am concerned about the neighborhood, about the impact of the, you know, the long-term environmental impacts of turf is is understudied right now, and so we don't know what will happen in terms of regulations about it by the lifespan of this field. But our fields do need help, and our, and I'm glad that we're investing so many resources in improving fields across our range of parks in Malden. The stories that I hear from the coaches and folks who are having to maintain, like literally go out and and make sure that the fields are safe to play on, and so there's not gra, or glass and needles before they can even get the kids to practice, is is really disheartening. And so I'm glad that we're focused on that more broadly. I think that we can do that, again, taking a different approach to this park. There's no perfect solution. Grass is also not the most environmentally friendly surface covering, because it takes, can take a lot of water to maintain grass. And so I recognize that there are trade-offs, too, in grass fields, that, as we learned in in our discussion, there is less playing time, there is more cost of maintenance, even though the, you know, the primary need to maintain is is just usage. There are valid opinions on all sides of this issue. I really want to appreciate the hard work of our city staff and consultants that have gone through so many iterations of this. I do look forward to us having a vote today and moving forward with it. And I respect my colleagues who are on different sides of this issue, and I appreciate the hard work that they've put in to this project. I hope that regardless of what the vote is today, that we do continue to talk about the environmental issues and the ways to support sports in the city, and that we can work on both of those together, regardless of how this vote today goes. So thank you. That's what I wanted to say.
That was the last slide from the chair. We seem to be losing people left and right here. I'm not going to repeat everything that Councilor Winslow said. He did, he did cover almost everything, believe it or not. He did leave one thing out.
Okay.
We are, we are. We are. You know, Councilor Winslow really, you know, is any good lawyer, summed up a very good closing argument and hit every point that I would have said, so going to spare everyone the the repeat. But one of the other things that we did do is, we did meet with the Salemwood students. We did talk to them a lot. They wanted basketball. And, you know, one of the things that we we did after kind of like Councilor Winslow talking about the underground parking, you know, at the, at the Salemwood School under the clubhouse, you know, we did find a way to put basketball half-court and also shooting hoops from, for them in the park, which is something that they really wanted. So, you know, when people say that we didn't talk to people, or we didn't have any community involvement, or we didn't meet with the Salemwood School folks, we did. We had many conversations with the principals and some of the teachers and the students. So there was a lot of outreach there. So I just wanted to kind of go on record as saying that. This is a project that Councilor Winslow and I have worked on since I was on the Open Space Plan with him in 2017, and we realized the need for more space for our our student athletes and just our students. So I am in, it comes as no surprise to anyone, I am in full support, you know, of moving this project forward. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. We have all of our counselors here. The motion was moved by Counselor Siminelli to approve the paper, seconded by Counselor Sika. And I am going to have the clerk call the roll on this.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
No.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
No.
Counselor McDonald.
No.
Counselor O'Malley.
No.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Council President Murphy.
Yes.
Seven to four. Paper passes.
Paper passes. So we'll on to the next order of business, please.
Paper 224-23, Committee Report, the Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred Paper 140 Series of 2023. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this paper out favorably to the full council.
On Counselor McDonald's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor, opposed. Committee report is received. Clerk, if you would please read the paper.
Paper 140-23. Order that $1,200,000 is appropriated to pay costs related to a change in scope of the Roosevelt Park revitalization process, project, to excavate additional soils down to a level of three feet, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44, subsection 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore.
Counselor McDonald for the paper. Thank you, Council President Murphy. So we had unanimous agreement in the Finance Committee to recommend this favorably. I think folks have followed this issue, but the purpose of removing up to three feet of soil is to create future possibilities for the surface of the park and to remove the maximum recommended by the the State Department of Environmental Protection to remediate the soil and remove the maximum amount of lead from this park by a school. And we did have some conversation about where the funding could come from relative to bonding. We had a communication from the Community Preservation Commission, asking about the ability to use their funds in place of this. We talked about other potential cash sources and ARPA funds and so on. It is hoped that we will be able to come up with a grant or an earmark that will ultimately pay for this, but what this bonding does is allow the city to proceed with the bidding and get the project underway, pending hopefully a different funding source. I will just say also, from the finance perspective, looking at the budget that we have in front of us for FY '24, I do think there are significant concerns about managing our cash on hand going forward, and so I think it's, I think it's reasonable to consider borrowing in this situation. So, as I said, we unanimously recommended this out favorably to the full council. Counsel, Counselor Siminelli, yes, Counsel Spatafora, you took your light off?
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay.
If that was a motion, I second it.
Actually.
Move on. I'll, I'll approve of the team.
Okay, seconded, seconded by Counselor Sika. Okay, Counselor O'Malley, did you still wish to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is a great example of what we can do when we compromise, and I think going down three feet to remove contamination is a a great gesture, and I look forward to similar gestures in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes, thank you. I also, I'm very happy to vote yes, so that we do go down and go down three feet, which is long overdue, but I also would love to look at additional funding, the CPC recommendation and and looking at the CPC, but, so I just want to echo what Counselor McDonald said.
So on Counselor motions, Counselor, Counselor McDonald's motion to move the paper out favorably, seconded by Counselor Con, Sika, Counselor Sika. Okay, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Cologne Hayes. Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McDonald. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Sika. Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
Also Counselor Siminelli.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Siminelli?
Oh, everybody knows he possibly around now.
Counselor Siminelli, would you like to vote on this paper? Thank you, sir. Counselor Spatafora, officially. Counselor Winslow.
I wish it was that easy.
Counselor President Murphy.
Yes.
Okay, paper passes 11 to zero.
Paper passes unanimously, so it is, paper is adopted. Yes, Counselor Sika. Okay, moving back to resolves. Okay, which are on, let's see, page, papers. Page four.
Page four.
Page four.
I'm sorry, no, one.
Page three, page three, the bottom of page three. Yep.
220.
Okay. Yep.
Paper 220-23. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Malden that the code of the City of Malden is hereby amended by adding Title IX, Chapter Point 08, Section 030, removal of litter at entrances. Every person or business that holds a license to sell tobacco or nicotine delivery products from City of Malden Board of Health shall, at its own expense, provide, place, and regularly maintain a cigarette litter receptacle at any public entrance in employee-smoking area, and shall weekly sweep up litter associated with tobacco and nicotine delivery products such as cigarette butts and packaging from any sidewalk or budding such business. Violations of this section may be punished by agents of the Board of Health and the Public Works Department in the manner provided by MGL Chapter 40, subsection 21D, according to the punishment schedule set forth in section 6.12.040.
Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, you know, having done so many cleanups around the community, and I know, I know we did, Paul and I have done them on Highland Avenue, and I know Peg and Amanda and others have joined in on this. You know, I just, one of the things I observed is that it seemed like the businesses that were selling cigarettes, there were just a lot more cigarette butts out in front of them. And and it was even like a comment someone made on C Click Fix about someone, you know, dropping off cans but then dumping their their cigarette waste in front of the place. So it just kind of, it's something that's been on my mind, and, you know, I think it's always important not to overburden businesses, and so I feel like, but the businesses that are making money from selling tobacco products, because it's not that much to ask them, to clean up the front of their building from, make sure there's not cigarette waste, and, you know, these kind of butt holders that, they're anywhere from 60 to 100 dollars, and a business is going to have a broom and a dustpan to otherwise sweep up their sidewalk. We ask businesses spend a lot more to remove the snow in front of their businesses on their sidewalk. So I think this is a fair burden to just make our business districts a little nicer and cleaner. And I'm just surprised sometimes that businesses aren't doing that already. I mean, I really give credit to Kathy down at Franny's and Patrick's in Maplewood Square. She does a great bit, you know, there are people smoking out there, but that sidewalk remains pretty clear, clean. So that's, you know, I wish other businesses followed that example, but, you know, sometimes you gotta, you know, this will, people get a warning, and then maybe they're going to find it. They're not going to, but it's a way, so that's, and I support, appreciate everybody's support on it.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Spatafora?
I'm not. Thank you. I would just second this, and I think if I'm, maybe Counsel O'Malley's going to say, what I'm going to say is, I think the next step is looking at our NIPS problem, because as somebody who's been along Counselor Winslow's and Counsel Linehan's cleanups, it's amazing the amount of NIPS that you come across, and hopefully that bottle bill that they were talking about at the State House, to have NIPS would be a great idea. But I'm supportive, you know, of the cigarette butts and certainly getting rid of that challenge, and then look at the next one, which I think is the NIPS. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam President. All the, all the tobacco stores that sell those products, they, some of them do get out there and clean, but every once in a while you got to go in the store and say, look, you know, this is a neighborhood here. Why don't you clean up all this stuff? And it makes a lot of sense. You get a good rainstorm, those butts flow to the curb, right down the storm drain, and that goes through to the Malden River, you know? So it's, it's nice if you can get their cooperation. If not, we'll just have to pay more attention to it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Malley.
I, as a, as a sponsor of this, I am also in favor. On the NIP thing, if if we had a bottle deposit on NIPS, I would be a millionaire. I think there'd be a lot of people on on the Main Street stretch who would be millionaires at this point, with all the NIPS that get dropped into our yards. I want to thank Counselor Condon for highlighting the Malden River. All of these butts get, often flow into the Malden River, animals eat them, it can easily kill fish, easily kill mammals. So getting this cleaned up, birds. I think one of the things that we need to be clear is that cleaning up is not sweeping it in the street, because that would only exacerbate the situation of them going into the storm drains. So really kind of clarifying that. And after we get this going, it might be helpful in the future, if it's successful, to look at doing this beyond just businesses and requiring potentially residential addresses to clean it up. We are, have some properties where people are smoking constantly, and it's a residential address, and they're just throwing it right outside their house, and it's no different than in front of a store. I understand that that's not what's being proposed tonight, but in the future, if this is successful, maybe we can look at making this citywide, because, you know, it's disrespectful to just throw it in the street. Thank you.
Counsel.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask to be a sponsor on this as well. And as far as the NIPS, I did hear from a few residents who actually reached out and asked if they could work on something like that. So now that I know there's some interest, I'll, will reach back out to them. Thank you.
I don't know if you can do that. I think like, like Newton or another city tried to do it, and the states came in and said, it has to be a state legislative thing. I support it, but I'm just.
So just a point of information, we did actually, as a council, pass this. We did, we did, we did propose this, we passed it, we asked the legislature to take action. I believe Counselor Siminelli may be right, that the, I've heard more recently that they might be amenable to it, but it would be a special act to allow us to ban them in Malden. That might be the route that we need to go. It might not be a deposit, it might have to be an outright ban.
It is getting late. It's going to be referred to ordinance, so we can have discussion on it there. Huh?
We just love each other.
So, I just wanted to make a motion to move it to ordinance with the request that the board also notify the business.
Oh, perfect. So, on Counsel Winslow's motion to move to rules and ordinance, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, all those in favor? Aye opposed. Paper. Getting picked on from all sides. Okay. All right, so the paper is referred. All right, we have two, oh, and if I just may say from the chair, I'd like to be added as a sponsor for that, too. Does everyone want to be a sponsor on that?
Sure.
Can we just say that it's kind of a group thing here? Okay, all right. So, next order of business, please.
Paper 221-23, resolve. Whereas the optimization of the City of Malden's trash and recycling collection and disposal is beneficial financially, because it reduces bulk trash tonnage through the diversion of recyclable materials, whereas the optimization of our trash and recycling collection and disposable disposal is beneficial environmentally, because it diverts valuable natural resources and electronic waste from landfills and unnecessary incineration, therefore, be it hereby resolved that it is the sense of the Malden City Council that the implementation of a potential scrap metal and electronic waste recycling program will help our city to meet the environmental, economic, and social needs of our residents. As such, it is requested that the City of Malden conduct proper procurement activities, such as but not limited to, in advertised requests for quotes or requests for proposals for scrap metal and electronic waste recycling.
Counsel O'Malley for the paper.
Thank you, Madam President.
For the resolve, sorry.
Oh, yeah, so this is, yeah, this is a resolve, so it's not binding, but it is putting out the requests that the city look into this, if it is determined by the mayor to be something that would be worth it. I want to thank the cosponsors, Counsel Condon, Linehan, and Winslow. All councils are welcome to join onto this if they'd like. I do want to thank the resident, Chris, who is here and wrote that letter of support earlier. He saw me watering trees on Main Street and stopped and was like, "Hey, like, you know, it's great that we have the composting, you know, metal is very heavy, electric waste is toxic and also heavy, it'd be great if we could divert that also from our stream. It will save us money in the long run," and to Counsel Winslow's point last time, it's likely, you know, revenue neutral, it might not cost us anything, because they can make money off the scrap. I do want to thank Counsel Linehan and Counsel McDonald for moving the original composting proposal over the hill, and I'm hoping we can do something similar to this. I would move that we pass the resolve without stifling any debate, and maybe also, at the same time, if Counsel McDonald is amenable, refer this to your Energy Efficiency Committee. I don't know if it fits there, but if it's not something that is palatable, we don't have to do that, I just thought it might fit well with your committee. Thank you.
Counsel Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I did actually get a message from Ron Cochran, who did let me know that we already have an electronic waste recycling vendor that they've been using for the last few years, so I don't know if we could still pass this, but really maybe want to see what is going on and where, you know, we might want to move it to, but they're already doing that in the city, and he was not reached out to, so he couldn't give you the information.
Counsel Spatafora?
Yeah, I got the same message. I also want to just be added as a sponsor. I think it's, you know, as we get more and more of these batteries and electronic trash and people recycle, and unfortunately, most of the things they design today are throwaways, you know, ask a child how many iPhones they've had, probably by the 14-years-old, it's important that we recycle all this material in a proper manner, not only is it, you know, just good environmental process, but also some of these things are valuable, and done right can be fully recycled, and I know a lot of car companies are looking to do the same thing, so I fully support this option.
Counsel McDonald?
Yeah, my question was also going to be if we'd talk to the city staff about this, so that's good to know that we already have a program. I mean, I think that was what showed up at the Green Malden Fair, too, and I think it was very popular, and I think we had to pay for that disposal, so I think there are definitely some questions to dig into about how to expand that, or regularize that, or fold that into trash fees in a different kind of way, because everybody needs it, so I'd also like to be added as a cosponsor with that intent, and I'm happy to take this back to the Energy Efficiency and Sustainability Commission as well.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counsel Cologne Hayes?
I was just going to ask. Sorry, hold on one second. Is that on now? I was just going to ask to be added as a sponsor. Thank you.
Okay. Back to Counsel O'Malley?
Yeah, and I appreciate the people jumping on to be cosponsors, it's appreciated. I actually wouldn't have known to reach out to Ron Cochran, I didn't know that that was in his wheelhouse, and I guess I don't necessarily, I never knew you could like put it out, I don't know if you had to put it in like a separate, but it sounds like we had to pay for it, I don't, so like, I think maybe figuring out exactly how should residents just be putting it out on the street, like, I guess maybe communication is probably why it's under Ron Cochran, and working with him would be great to kind of get the word out.
And I would also, from the chair, like to be added as a sponsor. So, is there anyone here who doesn't want to be a sponsor on this? Okay, so I think we're, once again, we're all sponsors on this resolve, I think it's a great idea. I know just even from my business, like, the metal grinding that we send out, we have someone come pick it up, it amazes me, like, this bucket of, you know, 55-gallon bin of metal goes out, or a few of them go out, and the check that comes back in is crazy, so it definitely is, you know, it's, yeah, it's.
There are a lot of pieces.
There's a lot of pieces, yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, so there's definitely some revenue source there, you know, whereas maybe, it doesn't cost us anything, because they're actually getting the revenue from the metal they're picking up, but it's definitely worth a topic for us to continue discussion on, so. Perfect, so on Counsel O'Malley's motion to pass the resolve, seconded by Counsel Semenelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolve has been passed. Next order of business, one more resolve, folks, to go.
Paper 222-23, resolve. Whereas many of the areas along Eastern Avenue in the Northern Strand Community Trail have industrial zoning put in place during the time the Sawgus Branch Railroad continued to exist, whereas the industrial zoning has led to a proliferation of storage buildings and other uses that do not take advantage of the potential this corridor has to serve surrounding neighborhoods and trail users, whereas the lack of greenery, both within the public right-of-way along Eastern Avenue and abutting private land, is unattractive and contributes to heat island effect that exists along the area, and whereas communities in the Boston region and across the country have reimagined the areas abutting rail trails to become dynamic urban spaces through trail-oriented development, therefore, the Malden City Council hereby resolves and requests that the City of Malden, through its Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, pursue grants and technical assistance with the intent to update zoning along this corridor through a collaborative public process.
Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, thank you. Amazingly, the Northern Strand Trail's been there 10 years now, if you can believe it, and I know about that time when the trail was first built, our planner, Michelle Romero, developed a sort of an updated zoning for the corridor, and I made some comments, but it just didn't really go with the council at that time, and, I mean, I could just dust off that paper and send it up, but I don't want it to go to planning board and rules and ordinance, when, you know, right now, we don't have a city planner, you know, at least a strategic planner, and, you know, we have Broadway Corridor and MBTA, so I just thought, this is a way to give us sense, and then I've spoken with Debbie Burke and just said, "This is something, when we feel that we have the capacity, we should pursue and queue this up as opportunities come," and stuff like that, so that, it's just, you know, we've had the discussions about the storage units, I like to be proactive, and rather than just saying not to do something, but let's say what we want to have that corridor look like, so, and I know Counsel Semenelli was supportive, so I'll.
Counsel Semenelli.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I agree with my colleague, you know, I was looking at some plans out front here, we, you know, we have talked about it in the past, about what the Route 60 corridor should look like, and, you know, I've always said that, years back when I was on the council before, that the Route 60 corridor is now Malden's new Mecca for business development along with housing development, because we already know that mixed use works pretty well with, off of one another, and, you know, there's always a lot of talk about the downtown area back in the late 90s, early 2000s, and, you know, we were trying to always get that, the old Malden that our grandparents knew, of being a Mecca of shopping and everything else in the Malden Square area, and I've always said that, you know, I think it has moved. I think that Route 60 is now our new corridor, it runs through the entire city, it affects all of us in our neighborhoods, and I think that we should really be taking a good look at it to see exactly what we want, what we want it to look like, before it does turn into, you know, a bunch of vacant buildings that's giving us warehouse rate for public storage, and they're making a killing in the public storage, because the rents are so high in the City of Malden that people that live, I know down in my area, and a lot of other places in the City of Malden, they got nowhere to go, so they gotta use the public storage thing. So, there's a need for them, I get it, but I don't think that that's where we want to see our city in 20, 25 years from now, and I think it's a beautiful corridor, and I think we can dress it up really nice, and I think we can accomplish both the economic portion of it, which is the retail business, along with housing development, whether it be market mixed in with affordability, I think that's the way to go, and I commend my counselor to the left for actually bringing this forward and staying with it as long as he has, and I just would like to say that I'm going to roll up my sleeves and I'm going to join my colleague, and I hope everybody else jumps in as well, because I think we've got a, we've got something that we can be proud of. You know, every few years on the city council, things come about, you know, we had the five new school plan, then we had the Malden Square revitalization going on under the Christensen administration, so every now and then, some big projects like this come around. Counsel Spatafora or something, ain't he? But, but the thing is, I think that, you know, every once in a while, we do have something that, you know, we can really be proud of at the end of, the end of the accomplishment, so I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you very much for your cooperation.
Thank you, Counsel Semenelli. Counselor McDonald, one second. Counsel McDonald. Here you go.
Thank you. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor, if that's okay, and I think this is urgent, I mean, the question about the, how our city is going to be able to develop, to grow our tax base, to deal with our housing issues is urgent, and I just want to recognize that our Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development is short-staffed at the moment, and so I just don't know what expectations have gone along with this. If you talk to them about capacity, I imagine we will need to have a senior planner in place before we can really consider this, and so I just want to acknowledge that publicly on the record, that, you know, this is going to have to be, we're going to have to staff up in OSPCD in order to be able to move projects like this.
Thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counsel Winslow for his proactivity here, I want to thank Counsel Semenelli for being a partner on this, too, and everyone else was looking to join. You know, for a long, I've been on the council for eight years, how crazy is that, like, going on eight years now, and for so much of that time, we have spent a lot of our energy piecemeal, one by one, fighting against things that we don't want, and it's very tiring for all of us. We always have to be vigilant, we always have to be on the ball and keep an eye on literally everything, because we are not clear in our rules and our zoning about what we want, and I think by being proactive and really taking this into consideration, what do we want, what are minimum design standards, how many trees per square foot of property, how many decorative light poles, what kind of tree pits are we going to have, what kind of sidewalks, I think that that is something that this could be, and, you know, for a long time, people have said, you know, "Why can't Pleasant Street be like Melrose Center?" You know, it's not two-way street, but there's no reason why something like Route 60, that is a two-way street, can't be more like Melrose Square, can't be something more like Wakefield Center, and I envision decorative light poles, I envision beautiful big shade trees that eventually grow over Eastern Avenue and Route 60 and create a beautiful canopy, and that when you drive through, it's not just going to be strip plazas, it's not just going to be parking lots, it's going to be a place where you feel like, "I want to live here." So, I look forward to working with everyone on that, and really putting forward what we want to see our community to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Another add to the sponsor, that's all.
Okay, does anyone here not want to be a sponsor, for the third time? Okay, so we are all sponsors on this resolve also. So, on Counsel O'Malley's motion to pass the resolve.
Sure.
No. Oh, I'm sorry, Winslow, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Counsel Winslow. On Counsel Winslow's motion to pass the resolve, seconded by Counsel Semenelli.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay. No, Counsel Semenelli. All those in favor? Aye opposed. The resolve is passed, and I'm going to ask for the next order of business, and I do believe that our city clerk is going to say the docket is clear, although she has to go find the back page now, because we're in the middle of the docket.
I have to find the right page.
I know.
Okay, so the docket's clear.
The docket is clear. Okay, personal privilege. I was just going to say, I'm giving everyone 30 seconds for personal privilege, no, just kidding, just kidding. Counsel Winslow.
Yeah, I have next meeting scheduled, a meeting for our Resiliency and Sustainability Committee focused on, we've been doing assessment of our major storm drains, and we're ready to present the results of that and some proposed construction projects out of that, so the plan is to do that 6 o'clock next week in council chambers, I don't know how that works with the Finance Committee, so we'll have to figure that out, but, yeah, I'm planning to do that, so everybody can see that it's actually, you know, pretty, you know, across the city, we've assessed everything, there's particular problems, but you can get an update next week, and then we can go from there, but, yeah, I just want to make sure that the council understands the results of that, where we're going to make some, you know, construction repairs, and then go on and figure out what we need to go from there to improve our storm drains, so that's, yeah, next Tuesday at 6:00 in council chambers, and that's also going to be on Zoom for anybody from the public who wants to attend, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that this Friday is the Malden High School Prom, the red carpet will be there, so I'm super excited, my youngest, Noel, will be there, and also to point people to the website, there have, Malden Pride has so many events coming up, that if you want to look at it, they have a great site that lists everything coming up, and it's maldenpride.org. I've been working on a vigil with them, but the first thing that's coming, they have an online auction that's going on now, they're trying to raise money for their event, and the pride flag raising is Thursday, June 1st, 6:00 to 7:00 here at City Hall Plaza, but if you check that website out, they're doing so much fundraising and great things for lots of events. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cologne Hayes. Counsel Linehan?
Thank you, Madam President. That was a perfect segue into what I was going to mention, which is that on Sunday night, we are going to be painting three of the crosswalks around the city as rainbows in time for Pride Month. If anybody is looking to get involved, we have tons of volunteers, and we're really excited about having a great turnout already, but we're definitely still open to folks who might want to pitch in, so there is a Facebook event, there you can find more information, or you can reach out to me, I'm happy to point anybody in the right direction, but that's going to be Sunday at 6:30 PM. I want to thank the DPW for repainting the white outlines of those crosswalks, there's going to be one outside City Hall, outside the high school, and outside the entrance to Maplewood Square, and thanks to the Maplewood Committee for hosting us a few months ago, so that we could talk about the plan and get public input on it. So, the meeting point is going to be at the high school, anybody who wants to paint, we'll kind of split people up and go into the three different locations, we'll be looking for folks to tape and then paint roll, and the last shout-out that I want to just give is to our Malden Police, who are going to be doing a detail for us to keep everybody safe while we do the painting. This project arose when we still had a transportation planner on staff, and it's taken a lot of work to get it over the finish line without that position filled, so just want to lift up all the volunteers that are putting a lot of their time into this to make sure that it gets done, and the idea is that they'll be painted and looking great in time for the flag raising on June 1st, so thanks to anybody who wants to participate.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Counsel Semenelli.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just would like to give a shout-out to Director Bobby Knox and his team for starting the beautification program that we're going to be undertaking down in Ward 7, he did the island over by. He did the island over by Carestead Park, which looks very nice. Just a couple other announcements. This week, we finally got the community gardens in the Suffolk Manor building. There's five, five by, five by five boxes right behind the gazebo in the Suffolk Manor building, which will allow the seniors to be planting flowers back there. So they were put in Friday, and they were filled with dirt yesterday, with loom, I should say. And so we're going to be having flowers brought down there. They're going to be planting flowers, just flowers, no vegetables, just flowers. So it'll allow the seniors to be able to get out of the house a little bit more and give them something to do. The other thing is that, good news, that I talked to Alan, who represents the temple for, on Bryant Street, he's, he was talking with his people. They are going to sign a purchase and sale agreement by the end of this week on the temple site. So we will have approximately 22 affordable home ownership townhouses being made available to Malden residents. It'll be a lottery system. What else I got? Oh, I want to thank the Malden Police Department for starting the community policing down at the Bowden Street area and along the outskirts to go along with the TAP program that we have down in Bowden, which is a multi-faceted programs for youth and seniors and adults. So I want to thank all the people that were involved with helping to put that together down there. It's working out pretty well. If you come down there on a Thursday night at like four o'clock, you might even get to see me in a karate uniform if you want to come on down. So, are you missing anything? Carestead Park is going to have a shovel put in the ground at Carestead by end of August, beginning of September. We want to just make sure that no baseball teams need the park for any use, so come August, they'll be starting to renovate the Carestead Park. I know I'm forgetting something, but I'll have to get it next time around, but Skate Park, oh yeah. Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. Counsel Spatafora has been a good friend and has been working on the skateboard park down in my area with a company. I think they're based out of, where are they based out of, Counselor?
Indiana.
Indiana. And they, they create skateboard parks, and they're going to just add to the, to the one we have. But I want to thank Counsel Spatafora for doing all kinds of work over there and helping me out with that park. I know I got a couple other things, but I said I'll be quick, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siminelli. Counsel Spatafora.
Yeah, I, I do want to, I will start with, since Counsel somebody mentioned it, Counsel, I will give him, as he calls it, a shout out. Counsel Siminelli, as much as sometimes he talks, he does, he does back up his talk. So I think the day after, or two days after the election, he got re-elected to the ward, he asked me to meet him at the, the temple. I'm very familiar with the temple. My mother played bingo there for 40 years, every Tuesday, and I knew a lot of the, the people in the temple. And Chris asked them, he, he knew they wanted to partner up in some way. Originally, the plan was to try to use the temple as a, as a springboard for other things, but ultimately, I think the congregation decided it was time for them to look for a smaller place. But Chris was also adamant that the housing component had to be ownership. We did not want to just put more apartments there affordable, not that we're against that, we just think that, that changes that area and brings a lot of passion and certainly ownership there. So a great job to the counselor there. The Bread of Life, I know Counsel Cologne Hayes was there, I believe Counsel Crowe was there as well, Counsel Winslow was there. Shout out to the, the Bread of Life for the signing, the, the steel signing. The thing I think is important to me, I know it's been a project that it's been on the cities, it's been longer, I think, than, than Roosevelt's discussion, not to, not to, you know, dig up a wound, but honestly, it's been a long time. They had funding resources, but the thing that makes it, I think, special is, is, you know, they lost Tom at the Bread of Life, and that was, that was an individual who basically, I think, was the identity for Bread of Life. And him not being there was not, I think, anybody's intent, but the same token is, it was great to finally see that come to fruition and in his memory. So it was a touching moment for me personally. I've known Tom for a long, long time. And then finally, it's Memorial Day weekend, and I think it's, it's a time that we, we have to, it honors the fallen heroes and who subliously served this country. And I know it's barbecue season, but I think it's always a great time to pay homage to those individuals who have fought for the freedom of this country, and it's a day to honor them, not just by having a soda and a hot dog, but just to take a moment to reflect on what we ultimately have in this country, considering what's going on. You know, if you look at Ukraine, you see today in the modern day what a war looks like. So for the, for all those members who, who have passed away, just remember a time to honor them. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. Counsel O'Malley. Who, who actually, sorry, Counsel O'Malley, I just hit Counsel McDonald instead. Counsel McDonald, then Counsel O'Malley.
This is a very quick Porch Fest update. I'm working with our schools department to see if we can get the super fancy food truck to hang out at the hub location and be able to give away some delicious frozen treats on behalf of the city council. And so I would love collaboration from all of you, like a token amount from each of your council accounts. We can go in, we can have it be on behalf of the council to give out, you know, some popsicles, et cetera. So I'm going to work on a, I'll work on a message that Lisa can send out to you all. Just let me know if you want to participate or don't want to participate, or you can let Lisa know, so that everybody has a chance to be a part of that. And if you'll be available at some point in that day to help show up, hand things out, it's kind of at the central location at Salem Wood School is the plan. So, because that is hard to coordinate via email because of open meeting requests, I'm, well, as I'm telling you right now, in, in personal privilege. Watch for me, watch for an email from Lisa. Thanks, everybody. And just, a lot, I mean, I'm, I'm, I understand that I'm, I'm very invested in my household, being married to someone on the Porch Fest organizing committee, but I'm super excited about Porch Fest. I think it's going to be an incredible event on June 10th. So just everybody, who's, so many folks are involved in supporting that, and so just thanks to everybody who's helping make it a tremendous event this year.
Thank you. Counsel O'Malley, sorry.
No worries. Thank you, thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I do want to thank everyone tonight for calm and respectful dialogue. I think it's, it's really important. I think, I think it shows that the, the culture and the behavior and the decorum of our, of our council is really trending in the right direction. I want to thank Council President Murphy for, for really leading that charge this year. It's been a great thing to watch, and I think it's been great for all of our blood pressure. I know for me personally, it has been. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't have, you know, tough conversations and ask tough questions, but it is important that we, we all get along and, you know, work for the people together, so it's, it's been great. And I do believe that we are entering a new period where we can walk, work together and really get things done. And like I said earlier on the, on the paper related to Route 60, I'm looking forward to that. That's why I ran for office, that's why I'm sure all of us ran for office. We didn't run for office to fight. We fought for, we ran for office to really, you know, get things done and improve our community. And I want to thank everyone here and everyone who talked about Malden Pride. You know, I used to get butterflies talking about that when I first was on the council in 2016, and the fact that I don't anymore, and the fact that other people are really kind of taking up the lead on there, it means so much to me. And it really is a, a evidence of how much our community is improving, and I think that we all, you all deserve a, a warm thank you from me and the rest of the LGBT community for that. Thank you for being allies.
Good job.
Thank you.
That's good.
And finally, it is Memorial Day, and I don't want to repeat the great things that Counsel Spatafora said, but this is a, a holiday that is in memory of our US military personnel who have died serving our country. And I just want to say, I hope that we never have to send a, a young life to die in a war ever again, and I hope that that is a, a thing that we can make happen. And the, the best way we do that is defend democracy around the world. And I do wish the, the best and the most successful operation in, in Ukraine to protecting their, their freedom. I'm sure that Memorial Day will be very big in that community, in that country, as it is in ours. Thank you.
So yes, and from the chair, Counsel O'Malley, you actually said what I was going to close with. I wanted to thank everyone. I know that Roosevelt Park was, you know, a very difficult discussion that we've had a number, for a number of years, but I do want to say that the dialogue among the city council has been so respectful, and that's why we're here. We're here not to have the same opinion all the time. We're here to have different opinions, to be able to have dialogue, to be able to speak to each other, okay? And walk away, not maybe being upset that night because you didn't get your way, but to know that the dialogue normally brings the best out for what the project is. Things have tweaked with Steve, Counsel Winslow and I have seen this project tweak so many times along the way because of the dialogue that we continue to have. We've had dialogue where we thought maybe we were going one way and it turned another way. But this council coming together in such a respectful way over the last few months, and especially tonight, knowing that we have different opinions, we have different reasons, but we sat here tonight, and I think truly as a council, we showed what we can do when we put our minds forward and when we sit and we listen and we respect each other's opinions, even though they might not be our own. So I want to thank you all very, very much. And following along with the Memorial Day comment, there is a great project going on in the Forest Hill Cemetery, which hopefully all of you will have time to get down and see. As you know, we recently dedicated the Vietnam and the Korean Memorial, and now we're looking at other memorials. And Chris Rose, our superintendent, they started to put the memorial for Desert Storm in the Veterans Memorial section where the graves were, but it was going to take up grave sites. So he came up with the idea to actually, when you come in the cemetery gate on the left where the Vietnam and Korean memorials are, there's a grassy space there. So he's, he's actually creating a Veterans Park there. Okay, so I did put something out on Facebook, especially the Ward Five people, that the statues were removed, they were removed for cleaning, they're now back, the lights are now back, the pavers are in, and it's, I believe it's going to be called like Veterans Park.